Please take your seats. We're going to start tonight's meeting, starting with the land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood, is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabriela Tongva and the Gabriela Keach peoples. We will now call the November 6, 2023, City Council Meeting to Order. It is 6:01 PM. Jimmy Palmieri, Commissioner Palmieri, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Byers?
Present.
Councilmember Heilman?
Here.
Councilmember Meister?
Here.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Here.
Mayor Shine?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. City Attorney Langer, do you have a report of closed session?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The City Council convened a closed session at 5:30 this evening. There were no members of the public to speak on public comment. The City Council discussed the one item of anticipated litigation listed on the posted agenda and took no reportable action. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to approval of agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes from staff?
Yes, Mayor. Staff is requesting that item 4A be tabled.
Okay, 4A is the ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood, amending sections 15.16.030, 040, 15.49.030, 15.51.010, and 15.51.020 of Title 15 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code to prohibit self-hauling of solid waste. That item is being tabled.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm wondering if we could move items 6E and 6F to consent, as well as combining 6A and 6B and moving them to consent?
6E and 6F, okay. Any objections to 6E and 6F? And you wanted to combine six... Can you repeat that second part?
6A and 6B, they're both encouraging vaccinations.
I'm okay with that. Yes, okay.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 2E from consent. That is the update regarding Section 8 housing unit inspections within the city of West Hollywood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I was ordering... I don't... 5A, the recreation free schedule for income in older adult residents. I know we-
We have to give direction.
I know. I know. If we could just send it over. Okay.
Okay, that's number 5A. Councilmember Byers, do you have any suggestions? Okay. I will try for... How about putting on consent item 6C?
I have questions.
You have questions? 6D?
6B.
6D? Questions? Okay. All right, so we have... We are moving... Combining 6A and 6B and moving those to consent. We are moving items 6E to consent and 6F to consent. And pulling item 2E to excluded consent.
And tabling 4A.
And tabling 4A.
Leave a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, so do we have any adjournment motions for this evening from my colleagues? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three. First, I would like to adjourn in memory of Adi Barkin. Adi Barkin, an attorney and liberal activist whose story was featured in the 2021 documentary, Not Going Quietly, died from complications of ALS. He was 39. Barkin, who was diagnosed with ALS in 2016, used his own battle for health care rights to become a leader in the effort to save the Affordable Care Act. In 2018, he co-founded Be a Hero, a nonprofit organization that aims to expand access to health care. Barkin is survived by his wife, Rachel, and their two children. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of David A. Lehrer, longtime LA Jewish community leader. In the... He's an advocate for civil and human rights. He died at his Los Feliz home at the age of 75. Lehrer served for 27 years in a variety of leadership positions within the West Coast office of the Anti-Defamation League, joining the ADL in 1975 as a civil rights lawyer, and rising to become Director of the Pacific Southwest Region, a post that he held for 16 years. His accomplishments there included drafting California's first hate crime laws, helping lead the legislative efforts to outlaw tax-subsidized discriminatory private social clubs, and confronting extremist groups across the West. And then, last but not least, Cindy Montanez. She was the CEO for Tree People. According to her coworkers at Tree People, anyone who knew Cindy knew that she was a force to be reckoned with. Her drive and passion for environmental justice helped Tree People become the organization it is today. Cindy was practical but dreamed big. From her career in politics as a member of the California State Assembly, representing the 39th District, and mayor and City Councilmember of San Fernando, to her time with Tree People, she got things done. She focused on helping communities that needed it most, and a lot of these communities are better off today because of it. Cindy, I hope we can do your life's work justice as we move forward with our own climate action plan and tree canopy policies. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Byers, do you have any adjournments?
Yes, quickly, I just would like to recognize Dorothy Edwards. Dorothy was one of the inaugural graduates of the CSH program, which is a Speak Up program for formerly unhoused members, to share their experiences to help transform policy. Dorothy was local to Pasadena and well-known to many across LA County. I got to know her well, and I'm really grateful for the work that Dorothy and the CSH program does. She did an amazing job transforming what people understand about the lived experience of being unhoused, and I'm very grateful to her life. May her memory be a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We lost two icons in the community. We lost Michael Magliari. Michael was the owner of the Rainbow Bar and Grill in Whiskey Agogo. He passed away Sunday. He was 73 years old. Michael made a significant impact on the music and entertainment industry. He continued his father Mario Magliari's legacy. He was the pioneer who helped spearhead the Sunset Strip Music Festival and really bring a lot more live music to the Sunset Strip. Both the Rainbow and the Whiskey are iconic venues in West Hollywood that have hosted so many rock legends over the years, and in large part, that's due to Mike Magliari's vision and his dedication. Our condolences go out to the entire Magliari family during this very difficult time, so I would request that we adjourn in Michael's memory. Secondly, I would request that we adjourn in memory of Donna Sauer. Donna was known as the People's Deputy. She served as a deputy to Councilmember Sal Guariello. She was a community leader in her own right. She was just well-regarded at City Hall. She was beloved by all of the City Hall staff. I would request that we adjourn in her memory. Funeral services for Donna are on Saturday, November 18th, at 9:30 AM at Forest Lawn Cemetery, and I would request that we adjourn and send our condolences to her husband.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine have been covered by Councilmember Heilman. I just want the community to know I'm sending all my love to Donna's family as well as Michael's family.
Thank you. I have a few adjournments. First, I'm deeply saddened by the current war taking place in... between Israel and Hamas. This conflict has claimed the lives of more than 1,400 Israelis and 10,000 Palestinians, with many more injured and held hostage. I know that this terrorism by Hamas has brought a lot of pain to our entire community, to many in the world, many of our Jewish community, Israeli community, Palestinian community. And we are... Our hearts really go out to the innocent civilians that are being killed as a result of war, which is always very, very, very difficult. Next, the victims of Hurricane Otis. We are saddened by the huge loss of life and property by Hurricane Otis, a Category 5 storm that hit the Pacific beachfront city of Acapulco last month, late last month. It's the strongest storm on record to hit this area and the Pacific coast of Mexico. Officials estimate that the number of those dead or missing from the storm was nearly 100 people. Our hearts are with the families of the victims and the people of Mexico. On November 3rd, a strong earthquake struck the western area of Jajarkot in Nepal. To date, at least 157 people were killed and dozens injured, and thousands left without a home. Our hearts go out to the families of the victims and the people of Nepal during this devastating time. On October 25th, 18 people were murdered in a mass shooting that took place in two locations, in Lewis and Maine, by the same gunman. This is the worst mass killing in state history and the 36th mass killing in the United States this year. Our hearts are with the families of the victims. And last, Matthew Perry, the beloved actor who brought laughter to friends, fans, for over a decade, with his portrayal of Chandler Bing sadly passed away on October 28th at the age of 54. And now we're going to go... Move forward to presentations. We have a recognition and presentation of a certificate to Mike Aguilar Godet, former District Representative for the 30th Congressional District, by Councilmember Byers.
Thank you. It's such an honor to be able to make this recognition. I'm sure many of us here in the community have benefited from Mike's outstanding service to our community and the 30th District at large. Maybe you've had a passport service, maybe you've just seen him at many community events. I don't know that a congressional staffer has made such an impact in a community as you have in ours, just in your presence and your familiarity, and really becoming a part of West Hollywood in the ways you have. So it is my pleasure to recognize Mike Aguilar Godet, who has worked as a District Representative for Congressman Adam Schiff, which represents the 30th District. This district includes West Hollywood, and we have seen firsthand the work Mike has contributed to support this community. As a District Representative, Mike has been one of the most impactful voices for our community, especially on behalf of our strong LGBTQ+ population in West Hollywood. Mike has always been willing to go the extra mile to support what makes our community extraordinary. Mike's infectious passion for public service has inspired all who serve our city. His tireless work and dedication to public service, outreach, and inclusion has made this district feel valued, seen, and heard, and well-resourced, thanks to our partners in Washington, DC. Thank you for your invaluable contributions to West Hollywood and beyond, and best wishes for you in your next endeavor, working for Los Angeles County's 3rd District for Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. We're thrilled you will continue to serve this community. At this time, I would like to invite Mike up to the dais and my fellow councilmembers to join us as we take a picture in honor of his service.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Byers, Mayor Shine, Mayor Protem Erickson, Councilmembers Heilman and Meister. It has really been an honor to serve this community for the past 10 years in the office of Congressman Adam Schiff. When I first started here, I lived on Cynthia, between Palm and Larrabee, and in an office known for their incredible language skill. My colleague speaks Mandarin, my other colleague speaks Armenian, both dialects. My big joke was, I spoke gay, and that's why I got hired. It is because of this community and my deep roots here that I've been so blessed to be able to advocate for the KLI Northern Extension, to advocate in appropriations process for the care team, to stand in community here on difficult days like the Dobbs decision and Proposition 8, and in days of triumph when we had marriages in West Hollywood Park. So from the depths of my soul and my focus on public service, I'm so grateful to this community for really getting my... Really getting what it means to be a public servant. And the heart of this community is incredible, and it shines through all of the folks on the dais today. So thank you so much.
We will now move to public comment. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes, with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items, other agenda items, if the member of the public cannot be present at the time, the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting, for those that could not be heard at this time. If you go over your two minutes and do not respond to the City Clerk's notification that your time has expired, your microphone will be muted. Instructions on how to participate in City Council meetings can be found on the City Council Agenda as well as at www.wihoo.org/councilagendas. And only individuals who pre-register to speak via Zoom with a City Clerk will be heard. The City Clerk will notify us when the last person speaking on the consent calendar has spoken. If we have reached or surpassed the 20 minutes, I will look to you for consensus to move the general public commenters to the second public comment period. Lastly, I want to inform the community that there continues to be Nazi Zoom bombing attacks at City Councils around the state. These individuals have been calling into public comment lines at City Council meetings and forcing communities to hear vile and hateful racist and anti-Semitic public comment messages. We anticipate such comments may come through tonight, based on the number of cities that have experienced these attacks. I want to tell the public and staff that while we may sometimes seem divided on some political issues, West Hollywood is united against hate. Staff has provided us signs that my colleagues, staff, and the public may use to express that we are united against hate. If you hear a comment that is hateful, you may hold up your sign, or you may leave the room, or turn down your volume at home. You are not required to endure speech that offends decency and our core values. Please let the signs show that we are united against hate, and this type of speech does not reflect our values. While these disruptors may be taking advantage of the opportunity to speak to our community, because we currently provide for telephonic comments, they will not break our spirit. We are united together for love and against hate. City Manager will go later, but now we're moving on to the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker this evening for public comment is Jimmy Palmieri, to be followed by Lucyian Tudor.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. Jimmy Palmieri, City of West Hollywood. About eight, or nine, or 10 years ago, all of the councilmembers unanimously, and every year since, have approved Boom, now rebranded as Vibes. I have to ask, in the next staff report, if you could please add language that would make this a regular West Hollywood event. The sad thing this year was, it was trying to be pushed out of West Hollywood, all the way to Hollywood and Highland, by the way. And I had to jump hoops and go through these barriers and speak to people that I really, at this stage, don't think I should have to do. This is one of the most successful recovery programs we have on the night that is the biggest relapse of the year. All of you have been to the event. All of you have been there. There's never been a fight because there's no booze, there's no drugs. You've all participated in judging contests, and I can remember sitting with Lauren for two hours in the freezing cold. I mean, this is... This is just too long for me to have to fight every single year for barriers that staff always puts up. I'm sure that most of you don't even know that it's happening, which is why I'm saying it out loud. I've never said it out loud before, but this year just was too much. Being pushed out of West Hollywood, being told that Fiesta Hall was not going to be available to us, being told that people were complaining, which is a fabrication because it would be documented, and I would have known the next day if someone complained. The loudest noise last year from Vibes was the thunder and the torrential storms that we were having. There was no noise from the event. So please, please, all of you have supported this. Let's make this a regular, permanent West Hollywood project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Our next speaker is Lucyian Tudor, to be followed by Karen Ayers.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Sepe Shine, Mayor Protem Erickson, and councilmembers. I'm here to speak about safety today. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, we got robbed. We'd been breaking into doors. They took the whole safe from the office. More than $20,000 of damages at La Buey. I know we're living challenging times, and you might not have the solutions right now, but I'm here to not attack any of you, but telling you, I'm worried about the well-being of this community, including the business community. We're living very challenging times. One thing I'm sure, block-by-block security ambassadors are not going to solve our problems. We need to double up sheriffs on our streets. We need to use the resources of block-by-block, which I know is going to be on your table in December, to discuss their performance overall. Block-by-block- Block by Block promise and under deliver, and we need to be safe. Being safe and expecting to not get robbed every other month with thousands and thousands of dollars in damages is normal for me. So please help us out, taking considerations, my thoughts, and this community needs to be safe. People need to feel safe at their home, feel safe walking our streets, feel safe to eat out in any of our restaurants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucian. Our next speaker is Karen Ayers, to be followed by Scott Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Karen Ayers, and tonight I'm here representing the Human Services Commission. Starting last month, a Human Services Commissioner attends these meetings to share information about vital social services provided by the city's nonprofit agency partners. This month is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and about 1 in 9 people aged 65 years and older have Alzheimer's. Stigma, poverty, and social isolation lead to increased health disparities for LGBTQ plus individuals living with Alzheimer's as they age. However, early diagnosis and intervention can improve the quality of life for individuals living with Alzheimer's and other dementias, and those who care for them. West Hollywood was the first city to adopt the Women's Alzheimer's Movement's five-step agenda, and the city, as part of its Aging in Place, Aging in Community initiative, designated Alzheimer's and other dementias as one of its 10 Domains of Livability. This underlies the city's commitment to offer support, such as the city's Be Well WeHo UCLA Memory Training, the city's Be Well WeHo Mindfulness Series, plus caregiver support groups, case management assistance, and health and wellness activities are offered through the city's partnership with the Senior Services Program of the LGBT Center and the West Hollywood Service Center run by JFS. That's the West Hollywood Comprehensive Services Center. The city also invested in technology to partner with the Los Angeles Project Lifesaver, which helps locate individuals with dementia who have wandered or become lost. If you or a loved one is experiencing challenges due to Alzheimer's, please go to the West Hollywood website or call the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is Scott Schmidt, to be followed by Joshua Marin-Mora.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Scott Schmidt, resident of West Hollywood and Executive Director of Emerald Village, West Hollywood. Last Tuesday night, we did something unprecedented and, from my opinion, amazing. We had the first-ever city-sanctioned cannabis block party in the middle of Santa Monica Boulevard, Route 66, the Mother Road. We had 1,000 people come out, have a great time, enjoy themselves, had a little costume contest, drag show, and we had zero medical incidents, we had zero arrests. Everything mostly went smoothly. Was it perfect? No, we're going to work on that. We're coming up, we're analyzing it, we're going to come up with a plan and give feedback to the city and get the city's feedback as well in the coming weeks. Two years ago, Emerald Village launched with a booth at Palm Springs Pride, and we drove out in a rented SUV and had a little tent out there, and people thought we were a retirement home. And in the past two years, this has been an amazing journey, and we keep wanting to build on the success that we've done so far. And I look forward to meeting with you all to talk about the plans for the future and how we can get there. But before I do that, I need to thank some people. First off, each of you on the City Council, like, you knew that if I was reaching out to you, I needed your help and advice, and I appreciate that, especially Lauren and John Erickson and John Hileman and Chelsea. Yeah, Sepi, I didn't have your number. Otherwise, he would have heard from me as well. I want to thank staff as well. David Wilson stepped in when needed, and Danny Rivas, and Jessica, and Vito, and Megan, and Cleo, and everyone at the city who helped make this happen. From all of us in Emerald Village, thank you so much. We want to build on this and continue doing great things for West Hollywood in the future, so thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speaker is Joshua Marin-Moran, to be followed by West Sieg Miller.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Joshua Marin-Mora, and I'm the new field representative for West Hollywood in the office of Assemblymember Rick Chavez-Zabur. I just wanted to provide a couple of quick updates. So first, Assemblymember Zabur has been formally appointed the Chair of the new Select Committee on Retail Theft in the Assembly, which is convened in response to the dramatic rise in large-scale organized retail theft we've been seeing in our region. Our region is one of the hardest hit in the state. The Select Committee will have their first meeting before the end of this year and continue its work through the 2024 Legislative Session. And second, I wanted to make sure that the public knew that November 1 was the opening day of Covered California's 2024 Open Enrollment Period. It's estimated that there are over 1.3 million uninsured Californians who either qualify for subsidies through Covered California or are eligible for Medi-Cal coverage, so open enrollment will continue until January 31, 2024. And I just thank you all for your time, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Our next speaker is West Sieg Miller, and then we have citizen position slips.
So here we are again. For freedom-loving people in West Hollywood, sometimes it feels like we're trapped in a never-ending nightmare. Almost three years have passed since the relentless campaign against the unvaccinated began. I still remember when society turned against us, labeling us as terrorists and killers, when public figures, sitting here openly encouraged contempt and stigma and disgust against us. I remember when the council enacted a humiliating system of mandates of medical segregation, coercing us with the threat of losing our livelihoods, education, and acceptance in the community we fought so hard to build. I remember when protesters who dared to speak out were smeared as bigots and threats to public safety. I remember when our cries for help were completely ignored, especially those of Black Americans like my friend, a survivor of Ed Buck, only to be revictimized by the city's draconian policies. In April 2020, BLM issued this statement, "Any COVID-related testing vaccinations must be voluntary, not mandatory, not conditional for employment, education, access to public resources, or other political, economic, or social functioning." The city's pursuit of so-called racial equity through medical segregation was completely unwarranted, and it tore open open wounds and prevented true healing. Over the past three years, there has been a glaring lack of learning, and despite the countless indignities, the majority of the city council here refuses to acknowledge your mistakes or even recognize our existence. Now is the time for West Hollywood to establish a truth and reconciliation commission, to acknowledge the harms caused by those policies, and to heal the stigma and disdain that we still endure. I implore the city council to engage with the Free WeHo Coalition towards that goal. But even if you lack the courage, the Free WeHo Coalition is still here to support you. Please join us Monday, November 13 at 7:00 PM for another support group. For more information, check us out on Instagram at FreeWeHo.com, or Free WeHo, at Free WeHo on Instagram, or FreeWeHo.com. Thank you.
Thank you, West. Mayor, we don't have any other speakers, but I do have citizen position slips. Viktor Omolchinko in support of Item 6A, which was moved to consent. Viktor Omolchinko in support of Item 6B, which was moved to consent. Viktor Omolchinko in support of Item 6E, which was moved to consent. And Viktor Omolchinko in support of Item 6F, which was also moved to consent.
On 6C. Right, we're not on 6C. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager's Report. City Manager Wilson, please provide us your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, and City Councilmembers. A few items for the City Manager's Report. Thank you to Scott Schmidt for his comments and for his work on the cannabis event during Pride. Halloween was a success by all measures. The streets were busy throughout the night, the businesses were filled, and there was countless thousands of visitors who had a great time. We had over 40,000 views to the city's Halloween webpage, and more than 71 million impressions on social media. All the major media outlets in the Los Angeles region covered our event, including KNBC, KABC, KTLA, Good Day LA, Fox 11, LA Times, LA Magazine, KCRW, and KNX. The city worked in partnership with the LA County Sheriff's Department, the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Block by Block, and emergency preparedness contractors who provide a safe environment. There were no significant incidents that occurred from a public safety perspective. There were four arrests for non-injury-related incidents, vandalism, public intoxication, and mutual combat. Overall, 26 businesses activated their spaces under the city's special event permit process. And again, overall, it was a successful event, and we look forward to having it again next year. Staff will bring updates on the public safety equipment, technology, and safety enhancements to the Public Safety Commission, LGBTQ plus Commission, and Human Services Commission in November, before coming back to council in December with an update and for approval to move forward with some of those things. Community members are encouraged to attend any one of those meetings in November to provide your feedback and comments. The dates and agendas for those commissions and meetings will be posted on the city's website at www.wihoo.org/calender. The city hosted a free CPR and first aid training for more than 25 participants last weekend through the American Red Cross. To learn more about future training dates, please contact the city's Community Safety Department at safety@wihoo.org. The city will be hosting a ceremony to honor veterans on Saturday, November 11 at 11:00 a.m. at the Sal Quariello Veterans Memorial at the intersection of Santa Monica Boulevard and Holloway Drive. And then also, please save the date for West Hollywood Day. The city will be hosting our State of the Community Event and Next Gen Mixer on Wednesday, November 29, starting at 6:00 p.m. For more information and to RSVP, please visit wihoo.org/WeHoDay. And just lastly, the city of West Hollywood aims for public meetings to be respectful and affirming. Sometimes topics discussed can be controversial, including like current events of the day. They may be challenging. I'd like to remind community members that the city contracts with organizations to provide West Hollywood community members with free and low-income support and services. There's a small booklet on the tables in the back of the council chambers, and it's also available online. But as Commissioner Karen Ayers mentioned, all the various social services programs that she talked about can be found in these books, as well as the mental health services programs. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. May we, City Clerk, what is the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the removal of Item 2E and the addition of Items 6A, 6B, 6E, and 6F is $1,599,000 in expenditures, $0 in revenue, and $0 in waive fees. There is a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. And the motion passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Let's go ahead and move to... Okay, we do not have anything on legislate, public hearings legislative. We do have Item 5A, which is a recreation fee structure for low-income and older adults' adult residence and youth scholarship program. Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present a brief presentation? We don't need a very lengthy one for this, please.
Hello, Mayor Shine, Mayor Proton Erickson, and councilmembers. Good evening. I am Stephanie Martinez, Recreation Services Manager, and with me tonight is Recreation Supervisor Clay Von Jubry, Recreation Supervisor Michael Gaska, and Aquatics Supervisor Cortez Jordan, and our Director Yvonne Corker. This evening, the Recreation Division is presenting an item to receive direction on recreation fees for older adult residents and a youth scholarship program for low-income residents under the age of 18. Tonight, we are here to discuss a significant and compassionate initiative that has the potential to profoundly impact the lives of our community members. Our proposal centers on the establishment of a youth scholarship program, which would provide financial support to our young residents under the age of 18, granting them $200 per fiscal year. The scholarship amount can be used at the discretion of the recreation programs offered within the division. Alongside this endeavor, we also put forth a recommendation to implement a reduced fee structure for older adult residents, thereby ensuring their access to enriching recreation programs at affordable rates. These proposals reflect our commitment to fostering the well-being and intergenerational connection in our community. Recreation programs play a pivotal role in promoting health and wellness among participants, transcending age groups and contributing to the overall vitality of our community. This is an important initiative that aims to invest in the future of our community while promoting inclusivity among our residents. Staff is requesting direction on a percentage amount to implement an older adult resident fees and a defined amount to be used for the youth scholarship program for low-income residents under the age of 18 in the amount of $200 per participant. Staff are available for any follow-up questions or comments.
Are there any comments from my colleagues on this? Or questions, I mean, not comments.
Just one question. As I read the item, we already have an existing youth scholarship program that is separate from the recreation program. I'm wondering if we could name this something else so that we avoid any kind of confusion.
Absolutely. We are going to think of a fun name that will go along with the scholarship, that will be tied to our division, so it's recognizable.
Thank you.
And that will not call out that it's low-income as well.
Excellent. Are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one individual who wishes to speak on this item, Jean Tara. Can you switch to...
I'm a 55-plus West Hollywood resident, so this discount would directly affect me. But I also stand as a representative of a potential tennis and pickleball concessions bidder. As such, I express an opposition to the proposed discount fees, but in support of the youth scholarship program. Since January of 2021, the West Hollywood minimum wage has increased by $6 per hour. The court fees have remained constant at $8 per hour. Looking at local courts in the area, we have Point Setia, which charges $8 an hour until 4:00 p.m. Evenings, weekends, and holidays, they charge $12 per hour. Beverly Hills, $9 during the day, $13 during the evenings, weekends, and holidays for residents. Non-residents are $13 and $14 evenings, holidays, and weekends. Beverly Hills does offer a resident discount, but to offset the discount, Beverly Hills requires a yearly membership reservation card at a cost of $12 for residents, $23 for non-residents. Compared with the West Hollywood fees at both locations, $8 all day, every day, weekends, and holidays. A lot of holidays are actually free. The table presented earlier, Attachment A, while it does show, the percentage discount is not really relevant to this. Swimming and community garden activities are individual. Pickleball and tennis, by their nature, are group activities, two or four, so the discount would be applied to everyone regardless of age. In conclusion, West Hollywood already boasts the lowest court fees in the area. Plummer also offers weekday free courts, which is essentially a 100% discount with this in mind. I respectfully ask you to vote negative on this. Thank you.
That is our only speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a discussion from our colleagues on this?
Mayor, I believe the only direction was creating the scholarship that you need direction on for the individuals.
Yes, it was two things. The percentage amount that you would like for the older adult rates, and then how much would you like to allocate for the youth scholarship?
for the youth scholarship in the item. It gives two suggestions whether we offer it at $200 per participant. There were two recommendations. Either $50,000, which would offer 250 youth, or $100,000, which would offer 500. And then the percentage rates are in Attachment A as an example of what would be affected as far as rates.
How many youth do we typically have that use these services?
Let me get that. So in our... Under the age of 18, we have 554 participants have participated in activities. And then in our system, we have 2,145 accounts. But 554 are active in the last two years.
Right. Well, it seems like maybe doing half of them scholarships as a fiscally responsible thing.
Yes, we can start there. And of course, not everyone may qualify, but we can start there. And then when we come back mid-year, we can give an update as far as numbers and what that looks like.
One of the questions I have is the cost to do the income verification. How much staff time and how much is that going to cost us? Because if it's actually going to cost us $10,000 to $20,000 in staff time to verify income, maybe we should be looking at this differently and just provide a discount for everyone.
Yes, the verification, we will handle in-house and follow typically what other divisions use as their verification. What we can do is, once a individual is marked as receiving that low-income rate, they would be marked in our active net system. And given, we would know that, and given the money, and put that on their account as like a credit, and they would be able to use that. So internally, it's not a hard process, but we would just have to establish that, the application process, the deadline to apply, and what that looks like. But internally, it should be relatively easy to monitor and then just go year to year. Because it's our programs that we're overseeing, they would only be recreation programs that they would be allowed, not contract instructors. So like if we have a child's yoga class or something, because that cuts into the contract instructor's amount, it would be our recreation programs, such as swim lessons, or youth summer camp, or splash camp, or something like that.
And then my follow-up question has to do with the public comment we had regarding the tennis concession. If we give people a discount, that doesn't necessarily mean that that changes the amount that the concessionaire gets? Or is the concessionaire's income based on the fees that we're charging?
Yes. So currently, we would be able to look at those fees in the RFP that we're going to release. Say, you know, per council's direction, this may be the approved fees, and so your submission should be based on that. The fees wouldn't take place until July 1st. But our current contract, I can hand that over to Mike, and he can explain the fees as far as the cuts and percentages is that.
Okay. But it's certainly something that somebody bidding on that concession could say, you know, this just doesn't work financially for us to do it with the new discounted rates, and they could propose something else.
Correct. And we would also be able to adjust what the city's percentage back is in relation to the overall gross of the percentage that they would take in as a concessionaire. So we can adjust that in the RFP, and that would be based on your direction tonight.
Okay.
In terms of percentages, I'm looking at Attachment A right here, and it seems like you've given us, "Pick your own, choose your own adventure," which I always, was one of my favorite ways to read as a child. But I think that in terms of figuring out what's best for those individuals, I'm happy to go with 20%. I'm actually even more fine going with 30% for a bigger discount for individuals. But I wanted to know, how many older adults are utilizing? Do we have those types of numbers, which you did for people under 18?
Yes.
And I say older adults because Barbara Meltzer will kill me if I don't say older adults. And Jimmy shakes his head, and Karen shakes her hand as well. So there you go.
We are changing our language as that as well. And also, our fee resolution, we'll be updating that when we come back next year. So for right now, we have 2,700 active net accounts in the system for older adults aged 55 and older. And over the past two years, approximately 600 of those 2,700 have been actively enrolled in participating programs.
Great. I mean, I'm for the 30%. I think that, you know, it's another way that we can ensure that people are utilizing our parks and our services. So that's, I'm fine with that, but I'm happy with wherever my colleagues would like to go.
I'm in agreement. I think that that...
The 30%?
Yes, 30% is a great discount for our community.
Okay. And with that, we would be able to then come and restructure when we come with the fee resolution with finance to restructure all of those fees. But then that will also be included in the RFP as a potential rate that they would need to look at. And we appreciate that direction as far as that is concerned as well, because then that gives the concessionaires that are going to bid, they would have their own system to track and all of that. So it's easier just to say a complete percentage across the board because that will directly reflect the RFP.
Right. So it sounds like we're in agreement with 250 scholarships, 30% discount, as well as naming the scholarship something different than what it is.
Yes.
Also, you're coming back in a year so you can let us know how it looks.
Yes, we will come back mid-year for a report on both and update. But then the fees, all of them will be restructured. So then we will go when finance brings that back for the new fee resolution for the new fiscal year. We'll go back now and restructure according to the direction tonight and restructure all of our fees to bring that forward. And then again, include that in the RFP as potential rates that they should consider when submitting.
Great.
Stephanie, I have one more question. So what would it look like to get the word out about the youth scholarship program? And how will older adults be notified about the fee adjustments?
Yes. So in the item, we noted that we will work on a marketing program and work with our communications department. My staff has already been trying to like brainstorm on how to do that, but it'll be available on social media, you know, obviously at our parks. Scheduling some time with either if they need to come in and make an appointment with staff on site to kind of walk through that. But once we establish the process and we have samples of recommendations what other cities have done as far as applications and what they ask for and how they verify, we'll use that as a starting point in doing that. But we'll have a complete marketing campaign to do that as well, for both.
Pickleball and tennis are about to save $2.40. And if I know our pickleball and tennis community, you might have a different angle on your hands with keeping them away versus doing.
Right, right. And when comparing our rates, obviously, because our city is so gracious, they are significantly lower. So that is something the concessioners who are bidding need to take into consideration. But we will work with them on that as well.
Looks like we have a motion by Mayor Protem Erickson, and I seconded the motion.
Yes.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you.
The motion passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Moving forward to Item 6C, Protected Bike Facilities. Councilmember Erickson Byers brought this forward. So we're going to have the staff representative introduce yourself and present a very brief report for this item.
I think it might be us, right?
Okay. It says, okay.
It's fine. Once a staff member, always a staff member.
Always a staff member. See, there you go.
Thank you so much, Mayor Shine. So this item came forth. We're always staff. So this is something that I think is very critical. It actually came to me when our city, through some community members who were wondering why certain streets on our, in our city were moving forward without protected infrastructure for people with bikes or for those that actually use scooters or any other type of transit to get them off of the sidewalks, right? We have made considerable investments and efforts into producing pedestrian safety in all ways, ensuring that we have better access for those that choose not to use a car and any other way. And so this is not only a way to say, let's not have a council that in 20 years has to say when they're improving a street, or maybe a little bit longer because I know they're very expensive to improve these streets, that says, oh, now we need to create the infrastructure. I think a thing that we should do and can do is by saying that if you can create a better and safer mode of transit for people, they will use it. We've invested that in Fountain, the Block by Block analysis in Santa Monica. Melrose unfortunately does not have that. This would not apply to the Melrose. That's too far down the path. But Beverly is something that does need to be addressed because that is a major pathway for bikers. But then it also then says, what is our goal, I think, as a city? Where do we want to go? And I think continuing to increase those investments in this type of infrastructure to build it with the right input and guidance is something that we would like to move forward on. And that's all I wanted to say. And Councilmember Byers, if there's anything I forgot.
No, I think you covered it. I'm happy to be available for any questions that come up from our colleagues.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Councilmember Heilman, do you have any questions? Sure. Public comment on this?
Yes, thank you. Our first speaker on Item 6C is George Nickel, to be followed by Parker Friedrich.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. George Nickel, I am a 19-year resident of the city of West Hollywood. I read the staff report on this, and there are certainly a lot of potential benefits. The most important being, it would be a lot safer for cyclists. And I know that we have a really passionate cycling community in our city. The other thing, of course, is if it can reduce carbon emissions. So if people are actually going to ride a bike in these protected lanes instead of driving a gas-powered car, that would make a big difference. But we're not the Netherlands. I really doubt that a lot of people would give up their cars. I wish they would. It's a lovely idea. So I hope that we would have some sort of reports showing how many people actually do currently cycle in the city of West Hollywood. How many people could be anticipated to give up their cars to cycle if these were approved? So those are my thoughts. Thanks so much. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, George. Our next speaker is Parker Friedrich, to be followed by Seven Graham.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. First, I'd like to say that we have much better weather than the Netherlands. For anyone who's tried to ride their bike on West Hollywood's painted bike lanes, it becomes immediately apparent how little safety they provide. Every block has multiple obstructions from delivery vans to cars parking to doors flying out, trying to kill you. Studies show that painted bike lanes actually cause cars to pass cyclists 15 inches closer compared to unpainted streets. So anecdotally and scientifically, these types of lanes don't really work. When people discuss the positives of embracing bicycle infrastructure, they mention increased safety, decreased traffic, air pollution, noise pollution. But a recent study out of Germany showed bike commuters were significantly more likely to positively engage in community activity of all kinds, presumably due to the fact that they're seeing their community up close on a daily basis. The reality is, our city has the capacity to be a great city for bicycle use, from the weather, to the flat roads, to the fact that half of all car trips are under three miles. Most people like riding their bikes. Most people don't want to die while doing it. It's not complicated. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Seven Graham, to be followed by Omari Janaki.
Good evening, Mayor, esteemed council members. I moved to Los Angeles in 2015. I started living car-free in December 2017. I have two bicycles and I have five skateboards. And this is the most fantastic city to cycle around. We are truly blessed. I cycle 365 days a year. I also use the Lime scooters, and I'll come to those in a second. I can tell you categorically, because last night I cycled to Santa Monica for a screening, that, and I'd like you to get competitive with Beverly Hills here, the section of the cycleway through Beverly Hills that is green and protected, as you're proposing, is so much safer. People steer clear. They respect cyclists. You feel like you're going to be okay. The section I came along through the city of West Hollywood, I did not feel safe. And in fact, I have had a car pull, I have had a car, you know, almost knock me off the bike once, and it was very, very scary. Unfortunately, we have drivers in this city who are not terribly good often, and they don't understand that they have to respect the right of way of cyclists. It's very good theory that they should be in the other lane if they have the option. They don't know that. And they actually resent you being in a cycle path that isn't a marked cycle path. They see it as an infraction on their right to use the road, and so drive worse. I would also like to mention the issue of cannabis. I know this city is very pro-cannabis. As addiction expert on Twitter, I am a little bit more guarded around cannabis. And people are often smoking on their phones and just going like this. When they see a green-marked route, they do respect you more. I would also like to say that the issue of scooters, I use the scooters to supplement the cycle sometimes. I also use the fantastic bus network. When you are on a scooter with your restriction with the hills here, it actually makes it very dangerous when you're going uphill because you go so slow that you can almost fall off. So I'd like you to consider that aspect. But in general, I would say that this is a wonderful city to cycle. I solcut it tonight with the dog in his tailwagon. I had to lock the bike somewhere that wasn't officially a bike-locking area because your car park doesn't have a proper bike area. The biggest problem for cyclists is theft, and I would really urge you to support the enforcement of, well, support the police in bicycle theft because when people have their bikes stolen, I know I have to go. They really are reluctant to then buy another bike.
Thank you very much.
But thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Omari Janaki, and then I will read Citizen Position Slips into the record.
Hi there. Thank you. My name is Omari. I'm a kindergarten teacher nearby in Hollywood. I bike through West Hollywood regularly. I'm just sharing that in the bike lanes as they are, I've actually been sideswiped twice within a few weeks' time. And I think one of the reasons we definitely need these protected bike lanes is that I got to talk to the people who swiped me, and none of them thought they did anything wrong. And so I think that's exactly why we need the protection, is that they will hit you, they will nudge you over, and when you stop them, they think that there's no reason that they needed to protect you. And so the reason we need to protect ourselves is because drivers are not taking any steps to protect us, and they don't even think that they've done anything that's damaging. So in both cases, they said, well, I needed to get to that parking space. And that seemed to justify them pushing me over on my bike. Also, they seem to think that protecting their cars is in the same category as protecting my body. So if they get a scratch on their car, they think that's the same or more damage, more harmful than me getting a cut on my body or having my thumb ripped off my hand. So when they say things like, why can't you just move over? It's because they don't realize that a pothole that might give them a little bit of jarring feeling in their car could kill me if I go over that pothole. So we definitely do need that protection. For, I believe it was George Nickel who said, this is not the Netherlands. One of the things I tell my kindergarteners all the time is we have ambition, and we look to societies and communities that we want to be like. We don't say, oh, our community's not that great, and so we should just devolve to the lowest common denominator. Yes, I don't think that people will give up their cars for bikes unless you force them to, unless you tell them to, unless you make them. And no, I don't think we should try to be less like the Netherlands. I think we should try to be more like the Netherlands. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Omari. We also have citizen position slips in support of this item from Viktor Omolchenko and Jonathan Mizrahi.
Are there any discussions from my colleagues on this? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm understanding this correctly, this policy would preclude us from using sharrows or other options such as median, median bike lanes, raised bike lanes, two-way bike lanes, green lanes. And I, I understand the intention, and I think it's well-intentioned, but I think maybe it needs to be broader to say that we, our policy should be to use the safest type of lane possible for a particular street on a case-by-case basis. Because the issue is that we have some streets that don't have sharrows now, that there's no way there could ever be a bike lane, and you may want to put a sharo, and your own policy says, no, you can't. Or, or, or green lanes, or, like I said, you know, we, we haven't used things, I actually went on, on AI yesterday to look for all different kinds of, what, different kinds of ways we can, you know, accommodate cyclists. And, you know, we, they also have things like raised, raised roads, which seem to be, you know, effective in some places. But again, every, every street is really different. And so for me, it would have to be that the policy is that we use the, the best possible, safest lane, or bike lane, or bike whatever, as possible, based on the circumstance, and, but don't, don't necessarily get rid of options.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Councilmember Heilman?
Yeah, I think maybe I'm having some of the same concerns, or maybe slightly different. I think, if I'm reading this correctly, it sounds like it's our preference that when we put in bike lanes, they be protected bike lanes. Maybe we need a little bit more clarity as to protected bike lanes. One of the speakers spoke about the green painted lanes in Beverly Hills, but those are not, in fact, protected bike lanes, as I understand it. So I want to make sure that we're not precluding us from putting in, as Lauren said, let's assume that there's a street where there can be protected bike lanes, but there's a segment of it where that isn't feasible. This sounds like we would be precluded from putting in a bike lane there because there's a portion of it where we couldn't put in a protected bike lane. So I'd like some clarification about that. The other thing that I'm a little bit confused about in the recommendation, this reference to staff to amend applicable, applicable plans to achieve the above referenced policy goal. My understanding of this agenda item is that when the council decides to put in bike lanes on a, a street, that we go with protected bike lanes, and that's the preference that we have. But I don't see us really talking about any particular streets right now because we don't have those before us. So I don't see how we could direct staff to amend any existing plans without knowing whether it's feasible or what the cost would be. So if you could clarify that. If, if all this item is doing is saying that it's our preference that when bike lanes are installed, they be protected ones, I'm good with that. Okay?
Any response, please, to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Heilman, and Councilmember Meister, for those questions. That is definitely the preference, is to have protected bike lanes where feasible and possible. That is the ultimate goal of this item, to say, when you move forward with these types of improvements, to do this. Additionally, we do understand that there are streets that aren't, where it is impossible to do that. And so what is the best for that street needs to have community input, as well as input from us if it's a big redesign. So yes, you are correct on the preference. Secondarily, to your next question about applicable streets that this would go to, is that this actually is about, in regards to the Beverly redesign, is that that project never included bike lanes or any type of protected bike lane, sharos, nothing. I believe in the item, but please correct me if I'm wrong. And as a result of that, that is a bicycle network that people do utilize, and we are, we have not yet begun redesigning and going to that street, like I mentioned with Melrose, but it is not too late. But then if this item were to pass tonight, and Francisco, I hate to call you out when you didn't mean to be called out in the middle of a meeting, but that item would most likely come back before us for that discussion of what that cost would look like, what the design would look like. And I believe Francisco said in our conversations that it is not too late to do this to that, but if you would like to say anything else, Francisco, in relation to John, Councilmember Heilman's question. Chelsea, sorry.
Yeah, just to reaffirm what Mayor Protem Erickson is stating, the, in seeing some plans come forward that did not aim the highest it could have aimed in terms of safety for the cyclists who'd be utilizing the lanes, our hope is that this policy would reframe every opportunity we have with the streetscape to aim for that highest protective facility possible. And then, as you're suggesting, Councilmember Meister, not let go of the opportunity to create a lane, but start from that lens of safety and work down. And in knowing that that hasn't been what, how lanes have come to us, we wanted to make sure that this policy could address that, if you want to step in.
Yeah, sure. Francisco, who comes from Long Range Planning, manager. So yeah, so I think how we would interpret that is to, you know, create a policy moving forward that would make protected bike lanes sort of the default, where feasible and where applicable. So we would bring back an item for council to consider. The, with regards to existing plans, the Design District, the Melrose Project is under construction, so unfortunately, it's probably too late to add any of the bicycle infrastructure there. For Beverly Boulevard, we're still in the construction development phase. So it is further down the design, but we haven't started construction. And more than likely, we won't start construction on Beverly for several years. So there is an opportunity to do some, you know, exploration as to how we could integrate protected bike lanes, and we could start the process of revisiting that, do some of the engagement that needs to happen, work with the community members, hire our consultants to help us redesign the road to incorporate that as an option, and then bring that back for council's consideration.
Francisco, I think you said something different than my colleagues did. My understanding of this policy before us is that we're not actually addressing any particular street. We're saying that when bike lanes are to be installed, that's our priority, to make them protected lanes. If this item is saying, we want you to go back and redesign Beverly to put in protected bike lanes, I think that needs to be done as a separate agenda item with a lot more community input and a lot more of us understanding what the cost would be of changing that. So I, I guess I need to turn to my colleagues to see if, if the intention is to give that direction tonight. I don't think it's, I don't think it's prudent for us to do that without a whole lot more understanding of what that means in terms of that project, even though it's not going to be built for several years.
Apologies. Yes, I do plan, if this item is to pass tonight, to bring back those plans for us to have that type of engagement and talk, for us to talk about Beverly.
Okay.
And the reason why they didn't happen at the same time is because staff thought it was prudent to have this conversation before the Beverly conversation.
Thank you.
It sounds to me that the clarifications have been given to the concerns, and I'm, I'm in support of this item based on those clarifications. So if the makers want to make their motions, we can move to a vote.
Can one of you restate what that is exactly?
Sure. So the motion would be to move staff's recommendations forward, but with the clarifications of having protected bike lanes where feasible, but then obviously if they aren't feasible for specific streets, to look at all various options on the table. I think that clarified your question. And then additionally, I believe I answered Councilmember Heilman's question because I don't think that would be a part of this motion, because I told my colleagues what's probably forthcoming, but I'm happy to make that in the motion if you would like to, but I don't think it's necessary. Got it?
Okay, so there's a motion by Mayor Protem Erickson, and second by Councilmember Byers. And the motion passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Moving now to 6D Amendment to the City Council member list of pre-approved organization events to include Scolas Ocorrentes USA delegation program. And this was brought forward by Mayor Protem Erickson. Mayor Protem, would you like to update us on this item?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much, Mayor. So this item is what we've done in the past in regards to pre-approved organizations and events that council members can utilize and travel to. The city unanimously supported the Palota de Trapo program, I think, three or so meetings ago. That event is a part of Scolas Ocorrentes, and that is an event based out of Rome, where they're having delegations go and meet and discuss the forthcoming opportunities with the Olympic Games, the FIFA World Cup, and it's all about community and civic pride and virtue for families that might not have all of the resources like some people do to have private sports opportunities. And so the two Catholic churches in the city of West Hollywood, of my myself, I'm a member of St. Victor's, are engaged in bringing their families to that program, as well as West Hollywood Elementary is in discussion to utilize their spaces for the program, as well as the County of Los Angeles, the City of LA, and LAUSD are all signed on to this event, and all have people going to talk about implementation, community engagement, and benefits to our local communities for this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there any questions from my colleagues for this item?
Question? Yes. So in the past, when a council member has gone out of the country, we have treated the expense thing a little bit differently, where I don't, I'm trying to remember if it was, I know that Councilmember D'Amico, former Councilmember D'Amico had been somewhere, and former Councilmember Horvath, and the, the split was something like, you know, the city covered airfare and the council member covered lodging or whatever, because we felt that, you know, going out of the country is a big deal, and it is on our taxpayers' backs, and that that would be a fair way of dealing with it. Is that how this would work?
So it is off-season in this traveling, so the cost is actually quite more minimal than what it would normally be during high season. I didn't have that intention here because I am representing the city. I also think it's an equity conversation when it comes to how the individuals, council members, even though I could pay for X, Y, and Z myself, what would it happen to be if someone isn't able to pay for them and they're still representing the city? So that is not included in this. But the price differential with what's going on right now over there is comparable to what's going on.
Let's make sure we keep it to questions and not any kind of argument discussion because we haven't had public comment on this. Any other just questions without getting into discussion about it?
I guess my question is for David. Do we have a formal policy regarding foreign travel by council members? And if we don't, maybe we need to have that brought to the council at some point in the future, kind of take it away from this specific request that's before us tonight.
Yeah, we do not have a formal policy for international travel. We just have the general policy for conferences and events, and it requires the city council to approve it for any council member to travel on city business.
Thank you.
But we, we certainly can look at a separate policy for international travel if that's the desire of the council.
I think that would be great, to have that discussion. Are there any public comments on this?
No, Mayor, we don't have any public comment.
Okay. I, I'm in support of this item. I actually, we can discuss this later when this policy comes back. It doesn't make sense to me that if we're going to send a council member, they should pay for a hotel and not airfare or hotel. This, again, I agree, this is a fairness, equity issue. Not all council members have the wealth to be able to pay for hotel versus this or that. We pay for us to go to other events all across the USA. The city pays for lodging and, and airfare because the thing I, that is important to me is that this has something to do with the city and the job of the council member, and it absolutely does here. So I'm in full support of this item, and that's where I am, but I'm happy to, I'm in second the motion, but if there's any other.
And as part of my motion will be direction to the city manager to develop that policy to come back sometime next year for us. Put it on your short-to-do list.
It's a good longer discussion to have for a policy.
Yeah, and, and just a quick question. So, and also, we all, there is a travel budget that we have, an annual travel budget, and just to make sure that that is fair and equitable amongst the five council members, and not to go over that amount, because again, it's, our taxpayers expect us to be fiscally responsible, you know, even if the travel is, is beneficial in some way.
Yeah, and I think we, yeah, sorry. I was going to say it would be good to look at that and see what, I didn't even know there was a travel budget, but good to know. Yeah, yeah. That should be in part of, I think, the policy that comes back, because who knows when that travel budget was created?
Yeah, and we, I was just talking with the city attorney. So we will most likely need to update the AB 1234 policy, our expense reimbursement policy, for appointed and elected officials.
Oh, okay.
And we could add it there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. And the item passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Moving right along to excluded consent, item 2E. Councilmember Meister, you pulled this item from, from consent, and is the item on?
I did. It's on, it's regarding the Section 8 housing unit inspections within the city of West Hollywood, and it was a follow-up on the, on the, on the whole co-compliance inspections, proactive inspections.
Can we just, I don't know if we need a staff report, maybe just questions to Danny Rivas on this?
Yep. Well, I guess I didn't quite understand what staff planned to do then. I mean, you have, you have some information about Section 8 housing. I don't know that every, every building is all Section 8 units. Maybe someone can tell me that. But I think for me, the concern is looking at the buildings. That's one of the reasons that we brought forward the proactive co-compliance. And so regardless if, if they're Section 8 tenants or otherwise, it's the same idea. We want to make sure that it's meeting West Hollywood standards, not the county's standards, but the West Hollywood standards. So I wanted to have this discussion so we could actually give direction, if possible, on that.
And thank you, Councilmember Meister, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I'm Danny Rivas, Director of Community Safety for the city. Yeah, just based on the request that city council provided at the last council meeting, staff did do some, some research to kind of identify more or less the estimated number of units and the number of buildings, and what that process was for folks that, right, are taking advantage of Section 8 housing. So what we did learn is that properties that fall under that, or units that fall under that, have to be inspected once every two years. They do have a number of habitability standards that they need to meet, no differently than what our code enforcement officers would look to when they're inspecting. So I think the question from the last council meeting was whether or not this would be something that we would just incorporate into the proactive residential program. And the answer to that is yes. We can certainly incorporate that if it's the will of the city council, but our understanding was just to provide additional information and then allow the city council to provide direction on whether they wanted us to incorporate it into the program.
Thank you. Are there more questions for Councilmember Heilman?
Yes, Danny, there are some buildings that are entirely Section 8, correct?
That, we didn't research, so I wouldn't be able to, to tell you that specifically.
Actually, that wasn't a question. There are buildings that are entirely Section 8, buildings that are run by the county, like are the buildings on King's Road. If those units are being inspected every two years and they're owned by the county, it doesn't make any sense for us to inspect them, at least in my mind. But we'll get into that discussion. I think there's a public speaker.
All right, let's get to the public speaker, please.
Thank you. We have one individual who wishes to speak on this item, Dan Harrington Tyrell.
Hello, city council. I wanted to speak and discuss this item and the supposed relationship between LACTA and how the city addresses problems in the affordable housing units, which are different than the Section 8. And I don't know what that partnership looks like, which is being suggested, but as far as I can tell you, you're talking about community safety, LACTA, code enforcement, and how that is supposed to be working well, or if it is working, why would we have problems? And we do. One of the problems that is most recent would be at Hayworth House. Those issues, I'm not going to go into all the details, but I think this is a failure. A duty of care goes back several years. Had we had an abud service, we would have identified these issues sooner. We provided solutions sooner, and we would address dysfunction sooner so that these issues don't become what they are. And also, just on a second part of that is, you know, in 2019 through 2020, at Sierra Benita, there was an elevator that failed three times, it actually failed four times, with somebody captured in that elevator. So, that's a person who waited an hour, hour and a half, to have, basically to, you know, to escape from the elevator. And it was left up to the manager to make that decision. The manager did not call the fire department. They called the elevator company. She was never counseled. There was no follow-up from LACTA. There was no follow-up from the city to prevent it not happening again. So, it took the fourth time in 2020 and a new manager to solve the problem. That's not acceptable. I don't care who manages the building. It's a building that's in the city. People should not have a different experience because they live in affordable housing, who live in the city of West Hollywood. And I think that's it. I know my speaker time is up. I think an abud service is really important.
Thank you, Dan. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to, yeah. Yes.
So, I would suggest that we include affordable housing projects in this. If there's a major objection to the 100% county buildings, I don't think there are that many 100% county buildings. Councilmember Heilman, is there maybe like three or four?
Well, some of the Housing Corporation buildings are completely Section 8, too.
No, no, but I'm talking about the county-run buildings as opposed to West Hollywood Community Housing Corp.
I have to say, I'm not in support of any of the Section 8 units being inspected. They're being inspected every two years by the county. It seems like it's just overkill for the city then to try to inspect those units.
But it's not the units, it's the building itself. Is the county actually looking at the building?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, they inspect the units as well as the building. I mean, there are standards for Section 8 units as well as Section 8 buildings, so...
So, if, so if West Hollywood Community Housing Corp. building, Sierra Benita, if there are some units that are Section 8, but then there are some that aren't...
Yeah, if there's a, yes, if there's a building with some Section 8.
That's what I'm saying. So, that building would be then, should be inspected by our co-compliance.
Yeah, and there are a lot of private buildings that have some Section 8 certificate holders, but the rest of the tenants are market rate, then I'm fine with inspecting that building, but I don't think it makes sense to inspect the units that are already being inspected.
Right. No, and I agree. And I don't think we're inspecting actual units unless a tenant complains. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah. I mean, so that's, we're not going into units where people don't have complaints.
And just one other thing that I wanted to make mention, too, that if a building is owned and operated by the County of Los Angeles, then that is not something that we would have the authority in terms of citing or addressing because they are another government agency. So, that's not something that we would be doing. Of course, if we get, you know, calls, complaints, then we, of course, pass those on and let the County of Los Angeles kind of handle that, since it is a county-owned and operated building. And then in addition to that, I just wanted to make mention that our program will not have the ability to inspect every single unit or building within one year. So, if they are being inspected once every two years, like the county's doing, then more or less that's kind of what our goal would be, but it'd probably be a little more than two years, that we would be able to kind of fulfill doing the inspection throughout the city, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we would include all buildings except 100% county-owned and run buildings.
I had one other comment, and that is, there are problems in some of the WHCH buildings, just like there are problems in apartment buildings throughout the city. There are also problems in condo buildings. Our elevator broke down over the weekend. Fortunately, no one has, was trapped in it. And I live in a condo building, and there have been previous times when people have been trapped in the elevator, and the manager should know that you call the fire department when that happens, and the fire department responds. I'm not opposed to us partnering with the Housing Corporation to address issues that they have in their buildings, and I think we should do that. I'm not sure that this proactive code enforcement is necessarily the right solution for buildings that are fully affordable. But I have no objection to us using this program to inspect the exteriors and inspect those units that are not fully Section 8.
Yeah. So, my motion would be that we include affordable housing projects in the program, and only exclude 100% county-run, owned, and operated buildings, unless you're, obviously, if there's a call and you need to respond. That's my motion.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Well, that is our last item. We're going to move to the public, last public comment of this evening, this section of this evening. This time has been set aside for the public to address the council on any items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council that could not be heard under item one at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have one individual who wishes to speak, Rick Watts.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. I've been up here before regarding a problem abandoned property at 1280 North Sweetser Avenue, and that problem is ongoing, although the, thanks in no small part to Director of Community Safety, Danny Rivas. Legal process, progress is being made, but the safety issues related to that property as a public nuisance and a fire hazard and a vermin breeding ground remain. And the owner has de facto basically abandoned it. The owner is based, I believe, in Russia, as I recall, although he does have a daughter acting as his agent here. There is a lien holder, as I understand it, but the property's basically been neglected, and the owner is no longer in compliance with the order to have 24/7 security on the property or to have the place secured against invasion by vagrants and so forth. There have already been at least two fires that have been associated with the property, and every time we have Santa Ana winds, such as this is the season that we have them, I dread something like that happening in the wee hours of the morning, where it breaks through the roof when everybody's asleep at 3:00 in the morning, and we end up with spot fires touching off on apartment buildings all the way down to Santa Monica Boulevard. Foreseeability is the same thing as liability in many instances. And so, I ask that you give Director Rivas all support that you can in bringing this to a successful and speedy conclusion, and at least securing the property against fires and getting the flammable brush and dead trees cleared out of there and the place secured.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. That was our only speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving forward to councilmember comments and attendance reports. Councilmember Meister, would you like to go? Please go.
All right. If the lights go off, it's going to be just me again. So, in terms of attendance, I attended the Disabilities Advisory Board Awards, the first city-sponsored Spirit Royale Cheerleading Competition, which was a huge success, the poet laureate installation, congratulations to Jen Chang. I represented District 41 at Southern California Association of Governments Energy and Environment Committee meeting, and the Regional Council meeting, and also attended Halloween and wanted to thank, Carnival, I should say, and I wanted to thank staff and our public safety partners for a fun and safe and successful Halloween. On consent calendar, I want to thank my colleagues for their support of item 6E, sponsorship of the screening and panel discussion of the documentary Shepherd, The Story of a Jewish Dog. And I especially wanted to thank Lynn Roth, the director, for providing us this opportunity to show the film in recognition of International Holocaust Remembrance Day. For announcements, I wanted to mention that Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee is having a special meeting, which will be held on Thursday, November 9th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Room at the West Hollywood Library, where the Subcommittee will be reviewing the design of the proposed development project and proposed billboards for 8410 Sunset Boulevard. And also on Saturday, as I believe the city manager mentioned, the City of West Hollywood's Veterans Day Ceremony will take place, starting at 11:00 a.m. on November 11th at Salguarriello Veterans Memorial. And then I just wanted to, just sort of to tag along on Rick Watts' comments. We also need to look at some issues that are happening at the 1200 block of Hayworth. There are some significant public safety issues, and we have Hayworth House there, which is the senior, sorry, the older adult building, and there have just been a number of issues that I would like for staff to follow up on there and for us to really take seriously because people are scared walking on that block who live there. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Byers.
Thank you. I was really happy to attend a number of community events, many of the ones that Councilmember Meister mentioned. I also participated in the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Service Agency, or Solutions Agency bylaws meeting. I want to just say I am very grateful to the Human Services Commissioners for the two meetings that you've now come to and the many more we have to enjoy. I think these PSAs during public comment are really helpful and useful in elevating the resources we have. I also just want to thank City Manager Wilson for highlighting the mental health resources that we have available to our community members. I know with so much going on and the holidays coming up, these services are more than an asset to those of us who need them. Thank you to everyone who made Halloween such a safe and memorable evening. I hope to see folks back here in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. this Wednesday for the literary death match. If you need more information, the WeHo Arts Instagram is the place I go for everything I want to know. That's all for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Heilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I got cut off two weeks ago when the lights went out, so my councilmember comments are going to be a little bit longer than normal. First of all, responding to the public comments regarding 1280 North Sweetser, I know with buildings like this, in the past, we have previously instituted nuisance abatement actions, and we have gone to court and have had a receiver appointed for a building to take care of those problems. I don't know if that has been done, but I would like our staff to look at that, to see if that process is appropriate for that building. Jimmy Palmieri talked about the New Year's Eve event. This is the first time I'm hearing that there is a problem with it, so I'd like to ask our city manager to follow up and give us a report. I understand that the ARC facility is not suitable for that event, but I know we have Fiesta Hall. I think there are other venues in the city, so if staff could give us an update, because certainly, as Jimmy mentioned, it is a very, very well-received event in the community, and it's beneficial for a lot of the people who are in recovery. In the last couple of weeks before last council's meeting, I attended the Code of Conduct training. I attended the West Side Cities Council of Governments. I attended the Equality California Dinner. I attended the AIDS Walk, and I want to thank the organizers and all the people from the community who participated in that. I also, two weeks ago, got my booster for COVID, and I want to encourage everyone in the community to do so, if they are able to do so. I know that there are some people who are, for various health reasons, are unable to be vaccinated, but for everyone who is, I want to strongly encourage you to do so. I got mine at Pavilions, and they're offering a 10% discount on your groceries. So, I know we oftentimes buy a lot of food for Thanksgiving, and this would be a great opportunity to take advantage of a 10% discount, up to $200. So, hopefully, they're still offering that. I attended Halloween. I want to thank our staff, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and all of the community for coming out and celebrating it. It was wonderful. Also, attended the DAB Awards and participated in the Homeless Subcommittee. And then finally, I want to mention, there's a visitor in town, Marie De Silva, who is a CNN hero. She has been at a number of city events over the years, and she was driving around the city, going to various locations and meeting with people, and she just expressed so much joy about being in West Hollywood, and so much appreciation, because many of her supporters are from this community. Tina Moore, who's on the Rent Stabilization Commission, was a former board member. Marie just loves West Hollywood, and she's participated in the AIDS Walk in the past, and she's attended our Women's Leadership Conference in the past. So, I just wanted to express that our influence is global, in a sense, in a minor way, and Marie was really wanting to express her appreciation for everything that the community has done to support her. That's it.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you so much. And yes, Marie De Silva is amazing, Councilmember Heilman. I know she has an event coming up, so I hope it's successful. I also was put in the dark last council meeting, so apologies. And many people know I get around, and meeting-wise, so there we go. So, I want to make sure that I can report all these out. I hosted a community safety walk with WeHo West. Thank you to those that helped set that up. Swarin, a new business license commissioner, Kevin Berry. I did a walkthrough of John Reed Fitness, and I encourage, now that everyone is open, to go and visit it. It's quite extraordinary. I attended multiple Contract Cities events, the Artist and Icons event with Tim Sullivan. If you haven't yet, buy your holiday candle from Tim. They're on sale. They're amazing. We love Tim and all that he has done. Various Circa events, I moderated a panel for the Circa event at the LGBT Center about making the invisible visible. I attended the Howl Owen event, where the pet mayor howled for all of us again. I intended a Zionist Virtual Community Shiva, the Code of Conduct training, the AIDS Walk event, and Ciclovia event in the heart of L.A., and looking forward to that coming back to West Hollywood next year, and I know so is everyone else. Additionally, in terms of meetings, this past week, or since our last council meeting, I attended a Stories of Heroism event with the Jewish Federation, the Contract Cities No Bail Update briefing, the WeHo Reads event, celebrating hopes in time of trouble, the Disability Service Awards event, where I want to again thank Assemblymember Rick Zabur for not only being in attendance and having a staff there, but also for a hit in the passage of AB 1620, which is an initiative that we've talked more about here, but it was really nice to see Yoela Doré, community member and chair of the DAB, Yoela Doré. Yola Doray, get such a nice recognition for all the hard work she has always done to our community. The Spirit Royale Cheerleading Competition with my colleagues. Councilmember Heilman, you were missed. Councilmember Meister didn't have anyone's shoulders to jump onto. Councilmember Meister, I know was looking forward to that, but Councilmember Byers and I added an aerial event because we heard it got to extra points. Nevertheless, congratulations to the Gay Men's Chorus who won it. The Youth Halloween Carnival. I attended and did many interviews with my colleague, Councilmember Byers, at 5:00 a.m. on Halloween Day, so it was a very long day. Additionally, I attended the New City Poet Laureate Installation. Congratulations to Jen Chang and to Brian very much, and very congratulations to all of the work you did. I love you very much. Additionally, the Emerald Village event was incredible, and the costumes were just out of this world. And Halloween went off without a hitch, to us, to David and to everyone else that was there, till however late you were. You don't have to say that. Thank you for keeping our community safe. And also especially thank you to our residents and businesses for the extra patience that you provided for what I believe was a very successful, and I'm sure it will be even bigger next year when it comes back. I attended the CPA, CPA Board of Directors meeting, and additionally, today's LGBTQ Caucus meeting with President Mayor Shine. And then a couple of comments. My first item that I did on this council was the Sunset Walk of Fame, and that was because of Michael Magliari and the individuals. And I will really miss him, and he was a great guy. And he gave me the best chicken noodle soup at The Rainbow. If you haven't gotten it, get it. It's the best when you're sick. And he once sent it to me when I was sick. A lot of people in this community send me soup when I'm sick, so there you go. Thank you to my colleagues for the items on consent. An upcoming event, the Transvagina Diaries event on November 11th and 12th. Looking forward to seeing that and being there. The Veterans Day event is coming up this Saturday. Looking forward to seeing my colleagues there. And one other comment. I am also working to find a fix to a bill that inserted a poison pill amendment last legislative session, SB 339, which was getting unanimous support through multiple individuals in the statewide Assembly and Senate, had a poison pill inserted at the last moment. We all understand that in California, there's a proposition that allows bills to be in print 72 hours. And the author of the bill, for many times throughout the process of the bill, refused to insert an amendment from healthcare insurance companies to essentially allow a preauthorization process for PrEP and PEP, which many PrEP navigators understand as a no-go and actually would set the movement back. At the last second, the Chair of Assembly Appropriations, Assemblymember Chris Holden, allowed, or as he has blamed his staff, for allowing a poison pill amendment, which essentially killed the bill. This was a priority bill, not only for the city. We were co-authors of it and pushing it, but it is also a very important bill to me personally because of the struggles that I had to go through to even get on a medication to ensure that I could have access to PrEP, to not contract HIV, but also something that I take very personally, knowing the history of the city. I think it is shameful of the actions of Assemblymember Chris Holden. He is running for L.A. County Supervisor, and I do too intend to remind people at every chance I get that the reason why this bill, which would save lives, was killed, was killed because of him. I'm lucky that we have Assemblymember Rick Zabur up in the California Assembly, who will be fighting for this bill moving forward with Senator Scott Weiner. Looking forward to its passage. But again, if you live in Supervisor's District 5, you might want to ask why he doesn't care about LGBTQ lives.
Since two meetings ago, I attended the Halloween, Halloweeny event. Pet Mayor Chloe, I wanted to say, she had a fantastic howling time. And we were very impressed with the event, which residents and visitors loved. Thank you to staff for that event. I also attended the Equality California Awards Dinner and AIDS Walk L.A. I attended the Spirit Royale Cheerleading Competition at the Abbey. It was a lot of fun. I love to dance. This is the first time I've cheer led, and thank you Todd Hallman for fantastic choreography. We would not be able to do it without you. I also attended the Ribbon Cutting for Butcher's Daughter, which is a fantastic vegan restaurant and cafe. And they had their one-year anniversary. It's located at 8755 Melrose. If you have not gone, please go. And I attended Halloween this year. It was so much fun, very safe. I got incredible feedback from attendees about Halloween this year. I'm really happy we brought it back. And as president of the LGBT CalCities Caucus, I led our first board meeting today. I want to discuss a little bit more about the current conflict between Israel and Hamas. And as it continues, there have been a notable increase in incidents of antisemitism, Islamophobia, and hate crimes worldwide. It is crucial for everyone to refrain from directing their frustrations and anger at each other. While we may not always agree on political matters, it's imperative that we treat one another with respect. This is essential for fostering a deeper understanding of the current situation and the complex histories involved. We have increased security to protect community members that are at risk for attacks based on antisemitism. And I want the community to know that we are definitely making sure that public safety is a priority right now, a heightened priority. My heart goes out to both the Israeli and Palestinian civilians who find themselves caught in this devastating conflict. I'm going to, again, talk a little bit more about the Veterans Day Ceremony. The city invites community members to join city officials, staff members, and representatives from the West Hollywood Sheriff's Station and the Los Angeles County Fire Department in honoring our local veterans at a special ceremony on Saturday, November 11th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. at the Salguerello Veterans Memorial. Parking for the ceremony will be available at the King's Road parking structure. For more information, please contact the city's Recreation Services Division at 323-848-6530. And please join the TransLatina Coalition for their annual Garas Fashion Show fundraiser taking place on Saturday, November 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Pacific Design Center. It was a lot of fun last year. It's going to be a lot of fun now. The event highlights the transgender, nonconforming, and intersex community and their allies as high-fashion models, designers, and stylists while raising funds for the TransLatina Coalition. For more information on the event, including on how to purchase tickets, And those are all my comments, and we are adjourned for this evening. I'm trying to find, here we go. The city council meeting is adjourned. It is 7:53 p.m. The next regular meeting is on Monday, November 6, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at West Hollywood Park Public Meeting Room, Council Chambers. Thank you very much.